It is 7 o'clock. I'd like to open Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting and we will have reports from the LEPC, which stands for the Local Emergency Planning Committee. And the FinCom will be joining us in about 15, 20 minutes. We're going to discuss financial considerations for the town as, you know, for fallout from the coronavirus. And I'd like to see if we could collect some ideas for, the LEPC is looking for ideas from the selectmen for our top considerations and concerns for the near, mid, and longer term of the recovery. Okay. Chief Fisher is here and I usually put him on first. So I'd like to kick off with the chief, please, or LEPC. Chief, you're muted.
Kate, are you gonna take any public input first?
Oh, I can. Usually we do the reports and then I can ask people for input.
Okay.
If they can, if people who want to ask questions, if you have the chat function operable, if you could use that, please. If not, I will ask for questions at the end of this, or public input.
All right. Thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So for those that are not on LEPC, the LEPC is a meeting three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And I think that the town's in pretty good stead. If I had to talk about a 10,000-foot view. Unfortunately, we still have a few people suffering from COVID-19, but more in recovery. And also, I think the committee members are committed to ensuring that the infrastructure is there in Carlisle to keep people healthy, both our residents first and foremost, and then our employees. So tomorrow morning, we're scheduled each division of LEPC.
You just cut out. Chief, you just, you just cut out. Well, I'll see if I can chat him.
None, we're not hearing you.
I can't hear you.
Oh, come on.
Poor guy.
I know, he's talking.
There you go.
We lost three quarters of that, I'm afraid, chief.
Well, I'm afraid that, I hope so Brian shakes his head. And then he asks that, what do we sometimes have during our other meetings? Like, but my laptop, for some reason, goes into mute. Either that, or Brian's controlling it. He says, the bald guy's talking too much. I'm gonna mute him. Let's see how long it takes him to figure it out.
Probably.
So I don't know how much of that you got, but I feel like we're in a good spot. And I'm looking forward to have members of the LEPC reporting tomorrow morning about what their short, medium, and long-term considerations are for Carlisle going forward. So I want those watching at home to have confidence in the fact that we are keeping up a planning mentality and looking at the considerations that we have to in our town to ensure that we keep our residents safe. Our policies and procedures that we have, we're constantly working on adapting them and ensuring that we're doing what we can to provide services while balancing that with safety. Police Department itself is in a good spot. We have a bunch of things we're doing in both the short and medium term to ensure the safety of people who come to the police department to receive services. But I thank you for this time, Kate, and look forward to any questions anyone has of either the committee or the police department. Thanks, Kate.
Great. Chief Soros, would you like to?
Yeah, so Chief Fisher and I have a nice, an enviable part of our job is that our people do go out and do wonderful things. And we get the nice letters and I even got a plate of brownies this week. But one of the other things we've been doing is collecting the masks and face shields and all that and distributing them. So all the people in Carlisle have been doing all this work and I get all the thanks when I go distribute them, which I think is a nice, a nice breakdown of work. It's, but, but people, it's, it's been great that Carlisle has stepped up and done that. And the places we've been delivering them, the face shields going to Emerson and the masks and all going mainly to long-term health care facilities. They've been very appreciative. In terms of internally, we're doing a lot of planning. The, this is a very, been kind of an exciting time. A lot of positive things in the fire department for this last six months or a year. And we have a lot of new people doing a lot of training. We're trying not to lose momentum. So we're trying to figure out how to, how to keep that going, even with the new, the new normal, the new reality. In terms of externally, it's, we have been successful, I mean, as, as a, as a region, with not overrunning our healthcare capabilities. So we're ready, we're, we're pretty well ready for, for what comes to us. But also even Emerson has not, they, they have plenty of cases, as does Leahy, but they're not overrun. So that is a good thing. So, you know, yay us, we've, we've kept it so that if you need care, there is care to be had. We have not overrun the, the resources that we have locally.
Excellent. Thank you. I saw Angela, right? There's Angela. Mute yourself? Here we go. Angela?
Okay, hi. So the Council on Aging is reaching out to the seniors. We've been in touch with the people making masks and they're gonna be delivering quite a few to you, Brian. And we'll get those first to the two housing complexes and then make them known to anybody else that needs them. We've written a grant to bring a meal to the people that are of the lowest income that we are aware of, of seniors. And we're gonna be delivering to a large number of them at the end of next week. So we're calling all those people to see which choices they want. We're moving as many of our programs online as we can. We're working with the library closely to have them come up with some programs that we can do together. Some games online. And we are starting a second online coffee chat. And the first one has turned out to be quite well-received. And we're doing all of our exercise classes online. And our new director starts on May 11th. Her name is Joan Ingersoll.
Excellent. And who says you can't teach an old dog new tricks? That's what I say. So let me see. Oh, Linda Fanchasia, there you are, Board of Health. Oh, sorry. Laurie, I'll come back, I'll circle back to you. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Linda, you are muted.
Off now.
There you go. Now you go. Okay.
Hi, everyone. So our case count of confirmed cases has unfortunately increased this week, but only by one. So we are now at six confirmed COVID cases, four of whom have totally recovered and two are still active. And our contacts have also increased, which you would expect. If there's a positive case in a household, then the family becomes contacts. So we, a total of eight contacts, five have been cleared. They've gone through their quarantine and three are still in quarantine. We did have some comments about, on the website, about people not quite understanding what our numbers meant or whether they were current or cumulative. So we, we are working on that so that people will know exactly where Carlisle stands. And also on the website, you will find that the state is now listing cases by cities and towns. So you can go right to Carlisle and see what the cumulative cases are for Carlisle. And we're all doing the same. We're dating it back to January 1st. That does not mean we think COVID was around in January 1st. It's just our way of tracking it to match how the state does. And so that's pretty much it. We're hoping the numbers just kind of stay where they are, which would be good.
Indeed. Thank you. Okay. Lori Eckler. And you are muted, so let's see. There she goes. Okay. So we are up to probably 14 seniors that were helping with groceries, groceries pharmacy runs, some trash pickups. We have not done any dog walking yet. And we are opening it up to healthcare workers or anyone that works in a medical facility. So doctors, nurses, people that clean at a healthcare facility. So Amy Smack and I have been working on a poster for that to put out there today to see if we can help those people as well. And then we have a couple other Carlisle families that were helping with groceries. And, and that's sort of the status update. Thank you very much. Christine, I, I don't see Jim, but I haven't checked the whole list.
No, I don't, I don't think he's here.
Okay. Christine, first.
Yeah, he's not here. So there's not too much, everything's rolling along. We are on break this week. I can't tell you how great it is to be in Florida, because I'm not there. So.
That joke.
It just literally came off the top of my head, Linda. No, so, so things are quiet. Jim is still holding, like he had his coffee this morning, parent coffee, and he'll still do storytime tomorrow at 8:30. So just a couple things going on. But we did hear today at noon time that the governor has shut down schools in Massachusetts for the end, through the end of this academic year. So now that we sort of have our marching orders, I'm sure that we'll get started on how to keep this show on the road. We don't have a meeting on Friday because it is April break. So we will probably pick this up a week from Friday in our regular school committee meeting on Friday mornings at 8:30.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Barney, who does, oh. Okay, so for those of you who would like, in the public, who would like to give some public input, if you go to your bottom bar where it says participants and click on that, you will see a little window that opens up. And at the bottom of that window, it says, there are three buttons, which say invite, mute me, and raise hand. So if you would like to give some public input, if you would please raise your hand so that we see you and can call on you. And unmute you, of course. Tim, do you see anybody?
I don't see anyone, Kate.
Okay. Is there anybody else from LEPC who wanted to add anything? Or anybody who wanted to ask anything of the LEPC? You'd raise your hand. Right.
Nathan had his hand up briefly, Kate.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nathan?
I was just making sure it was working.
Oh. It works.
Barney, should we talk about Friday?
Oh, dude.
So we are, Barney and I are part of an amazing group called the Carlisle Cheer Project, trying to cheer up the center of town. And on Friday, we will have the first of many, we hope, musical drive-throughs. So at Spalding Field, in front of FRS and in front of the library, we're gonna have single family or single musicians performing at these three locations. And people will be routed by the police to drive by each of the performances with their window down to enjoy just a little bit of music, but mostly enjoying some camaraderie with their fellow townsman. So that's from 6:00 to 7:00 on Friday. If the rain persists, then we'll do it from 6:00 to 7:00 on Saturday night. So spread the word and we hope to see you there.
Sounds good. And hopefully there'll be some sort of a school parade.
A week later, yep.
A plan. Okay. Thank you very much. I see, I'm gonna give another opportunity to anybody from the audience who might want to raise their hand, ask any questions or give any input, make some comments. And seeing none, I would like to thank everybody from the LEPC yet again for all the time and effort that you put in and planning. We are, as the chief has kind of alluded to, kind of going into our next phase. We seem to be coming up to the crest of our, whatever infection rate we're gonna have. But we're looking, we're starting to plan forward to the other side for the near, the mid, and the long term. And so of course I invite you to stay for this, you know, the next conversation with the FinCom. And then after that, the Board of Selectmen will be trying to create a list of what we think we should be working on for those three periods of time. I see somebody, oh, okay. Thank you, Christine. Great. Well, I got this flashing, that doesn't do it on my other computer. So that really caught my eye. Great. So thank you. And I'd like to invite the FinCom to unmute themselves if they're not already unmuted. And we have, can embark on, you need to open your meeting. So that we can.
7:16 and I will call to order the Carlisle FinCom Committee to have a joint discussion with the Board of Selectmen around FY21 budget implications of COVID to the finances of the town.
Great. Thanks.
All right. So I think we were here perhaps, I think it was a couple weeks ago. And one of the things that we highlighted, which has been kind of the center of the way we've approached our discussions the last couple of weeks from a FinCom perspective, is that the impact of COVID is uncertain. In fact, as we've discussed it, I think we've highlighted that we expect and assume that it'll actually have a multi-year impact beyond just the FY21. So as a result, you know, there's an aspect of potential unexpected costs. But even more than that, loss of revenue from a tax collection potentially as the economy is impacted, as well as state aid. And I think we all kind of read news articles about the economic impact and obviously the revenues that the state would bring in, the impact and aid that we would get from the state from a Carlisle perspective. And the way that we have been really addressing the uncertainty is really by having discussions around how we might increase reserves in order to address anything that's unexpected, whether it's loss of revenue or unexpected costs, as well as managing spend. And I think those are the two major areas that we've had discussions on. And we met last night. Certainly can highlight a few of the topics that we discussed and the certain, some areas of having a joint discussion with the Board of Selectmen would be helpful to get certain input in terms of approach or things that we're kind of working through. So I'll just pause here and allow any of the other FinCom committee members to chime in anything in addition that they would like to comment on before we kind of start. And with nothing, we can continue forward. Is there a way that I can just share a screen with, with the group?
Tim can certainly, he's the moderating this. And he can give you those permissions, I believe.
I should be able to. I was told to turn off screen sharing a few meetings ago and I did. Now I have to remember how to turn it back on.
Okay.
That's fine. I can actually just talk through it. It wasn't very complicated in terms of.
Thank you.
We don't need to fuss with technology at the last minute. So we look at it, you know, we've been, our discussions have revolved on a couple of things. First is really around FY20, you know, potential savings. And the other area that we would look at, looking at is essentially where we can look to manage expenses in FY21 expenditures from a budget perspective. And, you know, yesterday, we had a, had a conversation as FinCom. We had actually very important components to the discussion around potential savings, which is really around the schools. The Carlisle Public School, as well as obviously the joint high school that we have with, with Concord. And certainly that's an area of potential savings. The Carlisle Public School had provided an estimate of what that savings might be. Concord-Carla High School, they've also done their work and have an estimate. I think the amount that may end up being potential savings in the end for, for Carlisle is somewhat dependent in terms of how they are actually bolstering their reserves. And ultimately, obviously, what's, what's remaining would actually come back as a, you know, pro-rate between Concord and Carlisle, the way that we normally contribute that percentage. I think the other places that we had discussed was really a hold on discretionary spend. Revolving funds was another area. And current articles with unspent dollars. So from the Carlisle Public School, and I think we still have some of the, I'm just taking a look, but we have still some of the, I don't see any of them on anymore. But in any case, I think it's in the order of around $500,000. Or one of the things that was highlighted in there, obviously, is certain aspects of going into FY21 with a measure of risk that is not necessarily baked into that, an uncertainty, as well as the fact that the closure of the schools or actually this distance ed potentially has impacted actually somewhere the progress of some of the students. So in our discussion with them, I think one of the things they highlight is potentially having a program which would have a cost to it, to actually have summer school for, for students. That would be in addition to the normal summer school that they would have in place. This would be more general population. So in that, I think there was kind of a net thought that, you know, between the two, there's probably somewhere around $300,000 that would kind of come out of that. And where our discussion went was certainly, I think they also wanted to bake in some reserves for, you know, that they would typically bake into. But I think in our conversation, and I think we landed in an aligned position where it makes more sense if we were to kind of hold that from a town perspective. And as things came up, we should certainly have that discussion and begin to kind of shape essentially, you know, covering off on the risks that may have arisen over the year. And so I think that was the nature of the conversation. Concord-Carla High School, they've, like I said, they've done some of their work, but it's still to be determined. I plan to reach out to the Concord FinCom and have a conversation with them in terms of where they're at and what they're thinking about. From a standpoint of hold on discretionary spend, Kim can certainly chime into this. I think there was an estimate of about, you know, $300,000. I think that was using last year in terms of a turnback to the town of about a percent. Holding on discretionary, so we, we could expect to maybe go a little bit north of the 1% this year. And there was also another thought around revolving funds. That I think there was an opportunity there, potentially of another $300,000 from that perspective. The last thing around current articles, that was still something that we needed to dig into, the liaisons, as well as Priscilla, we're going to kind of go through and take a look at the unspent dollars and whether they're truly unspent and whether that there's an opportunity there from a potential savings perspective. So that's really kind of the areas that we've identified. And certainly from the standpoint of a Board of Selectmen, there are areas that we haven't kind of considered. Certainly chime that, chime in around that. So one of the key things that we'll want to talk about tonight, and we'll probably continue our conversation in the next, you know, few weeks, month or so, is really the options for FY20 savings. Certainly there's an aspect of free cash, reserve fund stabilization, and a potential, maybe a reduction of FY21 tax rate. We think it's gonna be a combination of one or at least a couple of these options. But this is something that we, we still have to discuss. And certainly would be welcome, the input of the Board of Selectmen in terms of your viewpoints in that. So I'll pause here. I drafted up these notes really quick between our meeting last night and, you know, tonight's meeting. So if there's anything from a, from last night's meeting that FinCom would also like to highlight around FY20 potential savings, certainly chime in, you can certainly chime in now in terms of that, those areas might be.
Okay. Boy.
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's anything I missed. So I did a pretty good job, I guess. So now I think we can open up for discussion on, in this point between the Board of Selectmen and FinCom. Any questions or thoughts in terms of shared ideas or, you know, feedback in terms of, you know, our approach and some of the questions around how we might utilize the savings at the end. These are all kind of projected numbers at this point. Obviously, we have to kind of track that through, you know, to the end of the year.
So Board of Selectmen.
Well, I think the, the idea of trying to figure out which funds to put the unspent money into is very important because some need town meeting approval to then spend from and others do not. And balancing transparency with security and the ability to respond when unknown expenditures come up is very, very important. I know you, I know you folks have thought a lot about that. And I just want to emphasize so that everybody understands that there are a number of places you could put that money and we have to be careful where it is. So we have reasonable flexibility while maintaining transparency.
Yep.
One other point is we'll also have likely two town meetings, one in September, October, and then presumably in April. Two opportunities where we'll be able to put some of those funds through a vote. So that's part of the calculus in terms of timing. We will have opportunities to have two town meetings beyond the June 23rd one for fiscal '21.
Barney, you're, you're muted. I see your lips moving, but.
All right. How's that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So question for the FinCom. Do you all have a target goal that you're trying to reach in terms of savings?
That actually hasn't, is something that we've specifically identified. I think we've talked more about, at least those two meetings ago, in terms of a target goal for FY21 in terms of what we would like to see in terms of savings. I think we were looking at a million to a million and a half.
Right.
If you actually look at FY20 savings, which is gonna kind of go into more of the reserve, you know, kind of padding opportunity situation, so to speak. You know, when you added up all those numbers, they came close to, you know, potentially, you know, about a million dollars if they all kind of played out exactly the way it's kind of projected as it is right now. So from that, I think, you know, you know, we didn't really specify for FY20 in terms of any, any targets, because in a certain sense, there's a bit of kind of control that we don't have in that, right? So we've already spent a good chunk of the budget. There's only this remaining piece. And some of it is material to be able to run the, run the town to the end of the year, right? So I think this is kind of more of like a bookend type of, type of number that we're kind of estimating right now from the savings perspective in FY20.
And I'm not sure I understood the, the net result in terms of savings from the Carlisle Public School. Were you suggesting that it, that it could be in the range of $300,000?
Yeah, it could be. I think they had kind of done some type of projection in the order of about 500. And FinCom can check me because I, on this other number, because my number's different from yours, Jim. In terms of the, in terms of the summer school, I had written down $130,000, thinking if they were to have a need to do a summer school.
That's what I wrote down, too.
That was the number they quoted last night.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the net of that, there were some other additional expenditures they anticipated next year, which brought it up to 230,000.
There were items of 50K each.
Right. So let me just enter in here, especially on Barney's question. You know, the schools, I think, came forward very, you know, helpfully with this half a million dollars that might not be spent this fiscal year. But as we all.
But as we all know, this fiscal year ends and everything kind of starts over. And now the school is saying, well, you know, we also need to increase our budget request for fiscal '21. Now, putting aside the merits of that, I think we all need to think hard about whether that's, you know, we can't do that as a town as a whole. We just can't do it in fiscal '20. We can't raise higher the number we already are working with. So we have to find solutions that don't require increasing a fiscal '21 budget that I think is a committee, as Victor just said, we already think is higher than we can afford.
Right, right. And I think that part goes on the other side of the equation, which we'll talk about, which is, you know, our thoughts around FY21 budget, you know, in terms of looking for reductions, not across the board, but looking to go through an exercise to identify where those reductions may be made.
I would totally agree with that. I think, you know, I think it's really hard for us to look at the budget right now and, you know, next year's budget and how we would increase that because it is already very, very high. You know, one of the things that you asked was, you know, thinking about where we might spend the savings. You know, for me, it's not a savings if we're spending it. And so it seems to me like what we should do is make sure that if there are funds that we're not expending and they hadn't been allocated to a particular project, we might consider allocating them to any unexpected expenditures because of COVID-19 and then use it in future years to try to, you know, bring the budget down.
Yes.
Or, you know.
Yes.
Other than COVID-19. I think, you know, COVID-19 is going to cost us money and we're going to need to be prepared to cover that.
Yep, yep. So sorry if I misspoke. It wasn't about spending the money, it was about how we would utilize it. And utilize it, I gave the number of options that we would potentially do it, like leverage it through free cash, a reserve fund, stabilization, reduction of FY21 tax rate. Those are the, it's not so much looking for projects to spend it on, but those are all kind of shore up, you know, to shore up the finance types of opportunities and levers.
Right. And if you think about the impact of COVID-19, it would seem prudent for us to think about covering the costs of COVID-19 and then reducing taxes because it's going to take us a while to get out of this. And we're going to really have to be worrying about taxes for, I think, a little while. That could be wrong, but it seems to me like it might take a little while for the economy to recover.
And it's not just a, the other thing we have to balance is there's some short-term things we can do to help fiscal '21 that might put us behind the eight ball in fiscal '22. So part of the balance is you don't want to overcompensate in fiscal '21 and then put yourself in a corner for fiscal '22. So there's a little bit of a balancing act. And I think as Kim was explaining last night, it doesn't look like we'd even be in a position to update the tax rates until likely quarter three of next year. So no matter what we do, people will probably be taxed at the same rate through the first three quarters of the next fiscal year anyway.
Right.
So there's a lot of things in play here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just as an example, just to clarify the short-term things, you know, let's just pretend we were extreme and said, well, we're not going to fund any municipal facilities as an extreme. Well, that's going to catch up with you, right, you know, in the outer years. So that whole aspect of balancing, you know, these shorter term decisions is definitely a consideration.
Luke, did you have any questions or comments?
No, no, really. I mean, you know, the only thing is like the maintenance, right? You have to continue to do the maintenance, right? I mean, that's one of the.
That's right.
It's, I think the, you know, the low hanging fruit is the stuff that isn't getting utilized now, right? So, I mean, obviously, nobody's in town hall, you don't really have to heat it. You know, same school, same sort of thing. There must be, you know, budget items that are easy picks from there. So, yeah, I mean, you know, and obviously you guys have thought of that and that, you know, I think that's the easiest way to go. And but, you know, just to kind of echo what Nathan said and what you guys have been saying is that, you know, I think, you know, the bulk of that money needs to be shifted to, you know, the COVID-19 piece. And then ultimately, yeah, any other savings, I think we bank it, you know, and then see where we fall up. Because, you know, yeah, we don't know what the economic impacts are going to be, right? And, you know, it may be that, you know, unemployment is going to rise. I mean, I think that's especially now with, you know, school out through the end of the year. I think, you know, people's jobs are going to be impacted, companies are going to have to lay off, you know, in order to meet their bottom line and not shut down. So, you know, I definitely think, you know, the, you know, consideration for the tax rate down the road, you know, and it may not be 2021, right? It may be something that we see in 2022, you know, just to give
Right.
a bit of a break. But that's just it. You know, I think we really just have to be cautious and, you know, kind of squirrel the money as best we can. And but obviously, the resources that need it, that's where it's got to go. But there should still be a surplus, I would hope. But, yeah, so basically, I'm in agreement with everybody.
And wait, just to remind you, Victor said at the beginning that our most at-risk revenue next year is from the state, wherever the state would give revenue. And that'll be '21, that'll be '22. But also to remind us of what we talked about a couple of weeks ago, if we look at the '07-'08 financial crisis as an example, obviously different, but an example, it did not impact property tax revenue until 2012. Think about that, that was three or four years down the road. Now, we're not going to plan for, you know, four years from now at this point. But, you know, I think what it also says to me, probably there won't be much impact on property tax for a couple of years. It'll be really, we'll be dealing with the state. And if we're dealing with the state, it also means that uncertainty will ride into the new fiscal year. You know, the state isn't going to have a budget probably July 1 for fiscal '21, you know, and then they may come back, you know, in mid-August and say, oh, by the way, you know, you're getting X percent less. So we really do need, as you said, look, we need to have something, quote, "in the bank." And then what Victor's talking about is, you know, which bank to put it in and how do we get it out again?
Yep. And certainly we'll have further discussions. And I think the last time I met, we met, I think we thought it would be good, you know, maybe touch base every couple of weeks. So as we have those discussions and have further thoughts, we can run more specifics for additional feedback around how we feel that we should be allocating any savings that we have this year into kind of reserve types of funds.
And so just, you probably, you probably got this heads up. But when the Board of Selectmen last met, we talked about the state, what is it, EFMLA, you know, the new law about, you know, like. Yeah. And so we're not going to go into the details about that now. But I just wanted to point out that if there is savings, one of the things that we did specifically ask Chief Fisher and Soros and DPW Gary was just to look at what might they need in order to ensure that they can still continue to provide those critical services during this time. So if they start, you know, if more police and fire and DPW start getting sick, you know, what are we going to do in order to be able to respond to that quickly? And our assumption is that that will cost money, and so we'll have to talk about that. So that's something that's kind of out there that I'm pretty sure that everybody's working on what that plan would be and what that might cost. But that's something, just in case you hadn't heard it, that was our discussion in our last meeting of, you know, please deliver a plan to us.
Yep, makes sense. So is there anything else? Oh, Barney's about to.
So, and again, two weeks ago when we talked with you all, you were thinking about possibly asking departments to come up with, you know, a percentage reduction. And so where are you when you're thinking about that?
So that'll be my next set of points, if anybody has stuff about FY21. So if everybody's good with moving on, that's kind of FY20 in terms of some of the conversation points we've had. So from an FY21 perspective, one of the, a couple of things that we talked about, I think I'll cover off on the one that Barney highlighted first, which is really kind of going through a budget exercise. This budget exercise would essentially not go to the department to say a blanket 5% cut, you know, figure out where it is. What it's going to say is go through that exercise of what you would reduce if there was a 5% cut. And then we would sit down with them to understand what the implications and impact would be. And I think that's the current kind of thinking in terms of. And then from there, we could make some forms of decisions. I mean, depending on what it looks like, some departments may get zero in terms of a reduction. I think one, and I don't know if Lena's joined. She's had a lengthy conversation with the Board of Health. And from the standpoint of discretionary funds that they have besides the payrolls, like 5%, you know, pretty much cuts into, you know, almost a lot of what they have, as well as the fact that they're the ones who are probably going to have mandates from the state around COVID, right? And so using that as an example, if they were to come and say, if 5% would mean XYZ, we would say, hey, you know, this doesn't make sense when you look at across the board. I think the other thing that we're thinking about is maybe making it a little bit simple is not the right word for it. But obviously, reducing 5% off $1,000 is not worth the exercise of spending the time to try to do that. And so we're looking for more of the bigger, you know, bigger bucket, you know, budgets to kind of, you know, to look at from that standpoint. I think the other comments that I would make around the exercise is potentially having all of the departments, when we meet with them, come together. We haven't finalized that as a direction, but it was an idea so that they can all hear across the different departments what it would mean for reductions across the departments. And I think that kind of falls into the nature of the exercise. I think what we want to make sure that we have from the standpoint of all the departments is to recognize this is a challenging time and we're all trying to work together in this. Really setting the tone for the town from the standpoint of this is probably not the right time to be increasing budget. It's really a reduction that we're looking at.
Sorry, just out of curiosity, so, you know, there are certain boards, Board of Health, ConsCom, Planning Board, no, Planning Board, Building Department, you know, that all have permitting. I know a building department goes into a different fund, right? But some of these go directly into the general fund. So that's revenue that's just not coming in at all. Do an idea what that's going to be. And, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, we need to cut budgets accordingly. It's, you know, honestly, I think Board of Health is going to be one that they're probably going to overrun their budget. And, you know, we use the surplus money to fund whatever they need to do. I mean, they're, you know, they're just as critical as police and fire and DPW now. So they, and I think, I think most of them are on this. I think they realize, you know, they can't go crazy. But, you know, you got to do what you got to do, right? So if you need to spend, you need to spend. And I do think that they're going to be one of the ones that run over. But in terms of just permitting, you know, we are going to lose some revenue. Do we have a ballpark of what that may be? Is it, you know, we're probably not talking much, but is it 20,000? Is it 10,000? You know, I mean.
It's, revenue slowed some, like with the building. And other ones right now, you know, the taxes is the main thing and it's, you know, coming in. As each month goes by, I'll have a better projection, which I had done before, you know, for revenues, budgets to actuals and actually see, you know, where we're at on that. So, you know, as soon as I can pull more numbers together. But buildings down a little bit. I haven't looked at all the other ones. Taxes, I'll know right after May 1st is done, I'll, you know, get all that together for that Monday, you know, if we have a meeting and be able to see where we're at. Because that's the crucial, you know, big part of the bulk of our money comes in the end of April, beginning of May. And basically, Priscilla and I get all the, you know, receipts right up to date and see where we're at, you know, going into May with one month left, one and a half months left of actually where we're hitting, you know, our revenues. But there will be some, but basically, a lot of Carlisle's is really, you know, taxes and real estate and motor vehicle, and then motor vehicles coming out. So the small amounts you might, you know, parkour recreation, obviously, but that's in their revolving fund. Building is down some from what I looked, but I'm not sure how much he normally gets in the last few years. I think his revenue right now is around close to 100,000, but it's usually closer to like 150. So I'm not sure how much more we'll get on that. But that is split 50/50 between revolving and junk fund.
Oh, okay.
That's something that we're thinking of changing. So you're going to see more of the revenue go down, I think, after, you know, after July for the fiscal '21 than you will towards the end of this.
Right, yeah, so, right. So that's the thing, too, is that we got to think about that into next year.
So when you, yeah, when you join your local receipts for next year, you're going to, you know, that's going to be a number that will probably go down. But then again, we're probably not going to be seeing a tax rate till next spring. We're probably going to have a third quarter preliminary filing.
Right.
And not an actual tax bill that will go out for January 1.
Excellent, great, thanks, Kim.
Great, thanks, Kim. Thanks, Kim. So I think around the details, these are still things that we're kind of nailed down. I think the thought right now, at least we discussed last night, is maybe get a memo providing some more clarity and direction. I know that Tim has already met with the departments and given them kind of a heads up in that. And then maybe giving them a week or two to kind of work through where they may take those reductions. And then we could certainly schedule times sometime, I'm guessing, beginning of May sometime, to get some discussion going and really try to work towards having kind of a final view from a budget standpoint closer to the end of May, which is what we need to have in place in order to feed a June, end of June town meeting. So I think that's from a rough type of approach standpoint, potentially having all the departments that are participating. We've asked to participate, to come together in a single meeting. But none of this has been finalized. This is just thoughts that we had from last night's meeting. So the other area that we've looked at and had discussions around really postponing certain financial warrants, certainly expires a little bit of time to see what the implications are to be able to make decisions and postponing them to the fall town meeting. So for example, you have, and this is not to say that all the long-term caps would be falling to this. Maybe there's a subset we haven't gone through and looked and kind of come up to a position on individual lines in the long-term cast. This is about $280,000 there. There was a conversation we actually had around OPEP as well, you know, because we fund that typically at 425. Maybe that's a decision that we need to make kind of later in, not for June timeframe. So between those, you know, if you kind of max those out, this is about $700,000 there. So I think we'll kind of go through those financial warrants and come up with some thoughts in terms of what we should potentially postpone, just to give us a bit of a better sense of what the implications are. We can see how the economy is trending over a broader set of months and whatnot before pulling the trigger, making some decisions.
I think another place to look might be municipal facilities, you know. Certainly want to keep doing the maintenance things, but if we're just putting it off until next fall, I'm not sure how much we'd really be getting done with the lockdown anyway. So it might be worth just taking another look at that.
Yep, yep.
And is there a way, I mean, so we're looking at the savings and everything. I think, you know, we would want to be pretty clear with all the departments that, you know, if, you know, like, let's say that this thing first, you know, somehow stops the, you know, the beginning of June, that we don't want the departments to go out and try to catch up on their spending in that last month, right? You know, it's already all been allocated, they're authorized to spend. I think we probably need some kind of a process in there to make sure that we're not suddenly spending a lot in order to catch up if this ends before the end of the fiscal year. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, the schools, when we met with them last night, the question was, would they be closed to the end of the year? That's been answered. So probably the two biggest departments in terms of fiscal '20 savings have, one of the benefits of making the decision now is that we do have certainty around that. So from that standpoint, they'll be able to better plan between now and the end of June because they have certainty now.
Right.
Or how they're proceeding. So the other departments, obviously, depending on what happens, you know, we'll just have to keep in mind.
Yeah, I think just a real clear message of, you know, you know, it's not a, because it was approved doesn't mean it's just okay to go ahead and spend it now. We really need to evaluate everything.
And that message kind of has gone out, Nathan, that discretionary spending should be minimized. And that, that message kind of has gone out, Nathan, that discretionary spending should be minimized.
Yeah, I think the message has gone out. I'm wondering whether, Nathan, and don't let me put words in your mouth, whether you're highlighting, you know, message going out is, is one thing. Is there some, some form of, you know, process that is kind of put into place to, to ensure, you know, that that's happening? But don't let me put words in your mouth. That's what I was listening.
That's exactly my point.
Yeah. So that's certainly, you know, that's something Tim, maybe you can take away and put some thought to, you know, as coming out of this meeting. So I think if the last thing, I think I just highlight here, and we talked a bit about that in the last discussion, which is really around, we had a few positions for next year, right? In terms of CONSCOM, the DOA and the Board of Health. And the Board of Health, I'll just remind folks is that that was actually net reduction to the budget in terms of the way they framed it, as well as it managed some expenses in terms of grants that they get by ensuring that they have kind of a backup, you know, for the, for backup kind of in place. So I think the first two are the ones that we kind of have flagged up previously. I think you've further discussion on that in terms of a position from the standpoint of the Board of, I don't know of the official position, but from the Board of Selectmen around FY '21 kind of requests or actually already approved increases in, in hours or FTEs.
Victor Lynn has her hand up. I'm not sure if she's having a hard time talking. Good.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay. Hi. Yeah, I actually, just to dovetail up of what Victor is saying, I just wanted to make sure that we take a look at the, I know the last meeting, my understanding is based on talking to Board of Health. And Linda and Kathy are here, they can talk a little more to it. But we initially had those two positions melding into one, which was a cost savings. And so I want to be, I want you to be aware that if we revert back to these two positions, the budget is going to go up. And on top of that, because we don't, we're not making this new position, Linda's backup, we are going to lose some grants from the state. So there is, there's a budget impact there that we need to be aware of. That could be somewhere in the, and I'm just ball parking. I would rely on Priscilla to confirm with the, the benefit component, but it would be anywhere from about, I think we said between $6,000 and $8,000. So I want to, I want everybody to be very aware of that. And Kathy or Linda, if you want to speak a little bit to that, just to kind of give a little color in terms of what we discussed around the budget, going through this whole budget process. I don't know if Priscilla's there.
Linda's muted.
Hello?
Right. So I just want to emphasize how important having that second fully trained person in place. And if COVID has proven anything to us, it's that how desperately we need that fully trained backup person. And Kathy Galligan did a tremendous job in working the budget. So even allowing for benefits, because it would become a benefited position, there would be no net cost to the tax base. So I don't know if any of the other board members have something to say. Guess not.
As, as I will summarize, you know, at the end, when we were closing our warrant and we were talking about the positions, I would say that the selectmen as a, as a group were very supportive of that position and what was going to be accomplished with it and the idea of succession planning and having the second, the two deep. And it was achieving a number of things that we were hoping to achieve in terms of, or, you know, work, you know, more efficient handling of work in the organization. So other selectmen can contradict me if they want, but I, that was my, my feeling of how we were feeling about that particular position. We were highly supportive of it.
I agree with that. It's, it's a position that is needed. And if anything, this crisis has made it even more, even clearer that we need that sort of support and that if we just need the backup, that's too important a role to leave to chance. And if anything should happen, Linda, we would have been in really deep trouble. And we can't, we can't allow that to happen. Not, we don't want anything to happen, Linda, anyway.
All right. Great. So, so that, those are all kind of the comments that I had made note of. I don't know if from the Board of Selectmen, were there any other questions or feedback that you wanted to provide or FinCom, anything that I missed in terms of the comments that I provided this evening?
I guess I, I guess from the board, you know, from my view on the Board of Selectmen, I just want to thank you guys for just getting right on this and, you know, bringing it up and, and trying to figure out, you know, what the impact is going to be. And I just really appreciate it.
Yep.
So I just want to say, there is a gentleman in the audience who had been corresponding and I know the Board of Selectmen have all received copies of the correspondence. And that was forwarded to us from Angela. I think this is the same person, but well.
Yes.
Yes. Would the board like to discuss that issue or?
Can I, can I make a statement?
Beg your pardon?
Can I make a statement?
You can, I'm asking the board if they want to.
If the board has, if, if the board has my request, then I'd like the board to consider this. You know, this is a very unprecedented time and the financial owes are more for the senior citizens. Because most of the senior citizens, they live from their savings. And as you know, the savings has gone down by 30 to 40%. And in order for us to sell our stocks to pay the real estate tax, it will be a big, big burden for us. So I would appreciate if the selectmen considered this and delay payment of the tax by about three months.
Okay. Thank you. I will just say that the board had considered at our last meeting whether we would delay the deadline for payment of taxes and we decided against that. We, if people need to break their payments up into, break their taxes up into payments, for instance, and do it slower or things like that, they can certainly talk to the treasurer and work out a payment plan. But at this time, unless I see from my board that they're interested in reopening that question. For anybody?
I guess, I'm just wondering, just, just for clarification, because I don't believe that I was a part of a meeting where we discussed this. So I don't think it was the last one. What, what meeting did we discuss it in?
I think it was the Thursday one that, that you weren't there. It was, it was the last Thursday, I believe.
Oh, not, so not last week, but the weekend.
The, the, yeah, the Thursday before, last Tuesday. The, whatever.
My request is only for the senior citizens, not for everybody.
You can't, as far as mass general law goes, it's to every taxpayer. You can't, in that sense, do one thing for a certain second. We can't do it case by case. If it's voted, it's, it's for every taxpayer.
I'm not talking of case by case. I'm talking of the, the entire citizen community of Carlisle. And that's a different group.
If it's done and voted, it affects every taxpayer.
And the seniors are in very difficult situation. As I described, you know. So I would appreciate the board to reconsider that again, you know.
Well, it's not on our agenda for tonight, so we would not be able to discuss it tonight. We could put it on another agenda if the board wishes to.
I'd just like to tell the gentleman that also, you know, we have created some different mechanisms in town that anyone is able to access, but in particular, senior citizens. And if you're not aware of those, we could, perhaps we could supply that to you later since.
Yes, I'm not aware of that. But I appreciate if Angela can have that.
Yeah, Angela would be able to advise you on that. Yes. Okay.
I guess with, you know, from, from my perspective, I, I think what I'll do is I'll just look over what the discussion was and maybe I can get back to you, Kate, on what my thoughts are.
Okay. All right. That, that would be probably the best way to handle it. And I'll give you a call tomorrow or, you know, I'd be happy to discuss it with you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I also think though, this is something that we should be keeping close tabs on. And, you know, Kim, if you're getting or Priscilla, if you're getting, you know, calls from individuals that are describing, you know, hardship or inability to pay. I, I mean, I think we should try to keep a count on that so we can look at that down the road.
Sure. Yeah, I've had more inquiries just asking, but not, not, maybe one other case that, you know, maybe had more of a hardship, but not, not, not a lot right now. There is a roundtable tomorrow that I'm going to be at and also one on Wednesday with the DOS. So they're going to discuss a lot around this and what might happen. There's a lot of repercussions with towns now that have extended it. And then with the revenues coming further out, then you're into revenue anticipation notes that are crossing fiscal years and it affects your demand bill. But there are the next few days, there's a lot of roundtables, webinars, all discussing, you know, different outlets or different ways of things we can do. So I'll update you on anything new right here.
Well, I would also like to know the state regulation, which prohibits making the distinctions from the citizens and the rest of the public. If you have that, I would appreciate you, if you would give that to Angela. I thought each town makes their own rule for senior citizens. And they make various breaks for the senior citizens and Carlisle has not done anything. So if you, if you could point me the state regulation, which says that distinction cannot be made between senior citizens and the rest of the public, I would appreciate a copy of that to give to Angela. Please do that.
I do want to, I do want to point out that there, there are breaks for senior citizens in Carlisle. And on, on this, maybe not spring warrant now, it might go to the fall, the, the fall warrant. There, there are additional that the town is considering or the town will be asked to consider, town, town meeting will be asked to consider. But there, there are currently some breaks. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim. There are certain things that, for, for some senior citizens, we've gone to taxes.
Those are through the assessor's office and those would be in the form of an exemption or an abatement. And that's through the assessor's office. So there would, there's, you know, certain exemptions and abatements that are through the, and the senior work off. And that's all through the assessor's office, not through the collectors.
Okay.
I think increasing those exemptions are still on our warrant for this spring, Nathan. I can't remember though.
Yes, they are.
And they would go into effect for the next fiscal year. But it is a process within so many days of receiving your tax bill and it is all through the assessor's office.
Okay. And I assume that in the meeting when this was discussed was kind of, Kim, did you go through kind of like any legal requirement, you know, legal obligation, legal issues with it? Or like, I don't think we can spend money we don't have. But, you know, like, if, if, if we were to push this off, did we talk about what the impact of the town or what the legal implications of it would be?
Well, there weren't really any full legal implications. What it was, was each town was given the option to either extend the due date to June 1st or to exempt interest through June 30th. And that could have included motor vehicle or anything. What happened after is some towns did, some towns didn't. Some felt it was not really a relief. It was just pushing the due date out. So if you push the day, due date to June or July, June 1st or June 29th, you then turn around on July 1 and have another bill that's going out, a preliminary tax bill and a demand bill. So it would have pushed all those other ones. So you would basically in one month be getting or within that next month, getting all your bills on top. So it wasn't a relief of a percentage. It was, yes, a pushout. What's happening now is they're answering questions is if you pay it on June 30th, depending what day you push it back, you don't pay interest for one day. Your interest goes back to whatever due date the town had kept. So if it was May, it's 61 days. And if it was a June 1st, on June 30th, you're paying 31 days of interest. So it was a relief during a time period, but not a permanent type of relief. And now they're just looking into it because if towns are doing that, by law, you're supposed to send your demand bill out by the end of June. So they're talking about how that reflects on it and we're waiting for answers on, from DOR on that. And then if you have a revenue anticipation note or RAN, those are usually paid before the June 30th. So now there's other things that towns are, you know, trying to figure out. And it pushed their revenue for big payments on July, you know, off. So for us right now, we're keeping steady with what we have, as I see. And again, on May 2nd or 3rd, whatever, May 1st is Friday. So on the Monday, I'll get everything together and see where we were at projected from one year to the other.
What interest rate, if somebody decides to defer it, what interest rate would it be paying? Right now, all the mortgage companies are charging like 3% to 4%.
The interest rate on taxes when they're delinquent are 14%.
Yeah, that is, that is, that's, that's the rule many years back. Currently, the situation has changed. The whole world has changed.
They've, they've talked about reviewing that and it used to be way back, like 4%, 6%, 8% over other years. It was bumped up to 14% when, remember, the money markets and everything were paying, you know, mortgages were 18% and, and money markets were 14% and people were keeping their money in the bank, not paying their taxes and they had to pay 6% on their interest. So that bombed and it hasn't reversed down, but that may be something that would be in legislation to be reviewed.
Okay. So I, I did what I said I wasn't going to do, which is I, I jumped us into it. So I'll bring us back to, I'll, I'll, I'll watch the recording and then I'll chat with you, Kate.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else from the FinCom or any of those items?
Yep. Anything else to share from the FinCom committee in terms of items for this evening?
Great.
If not, we'll take a motion to adjourn our meeting and allow you to continue yours.
So moved? Okay.
Okay. And we'll have to do a roll call?
Catatio I.
Ri.
I heard Lynn say.
Yes, Limutinsky I. Sorry about that.
And so, thank you very much. I, I do, do keep us in touch when you finally convene your little meeting with all the departments. I don't know if some of us would want to be there or if you think that would be helpful for us or if we should, you know, or not. So that's, that's great. And of course, you know, we did talk last night about kind of the, our deadlines of, in May for getting to the, okay.
Victor, you had mentioned you had something you might, you wanted to share, maybe was related to the, some of the numbers you gave at the beginning of your comments. I'm just wondering if that's something you could send to Tim and he could send out to the Board of Selectmen.
I, I can. The, the slides don't have, don't have numbers on them. I was going based upon memory from last night, but it has all, all the items listed, so I can send it along to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Great. All right. It, if the Board of Selectmen could just take a minute or two, I hope you had some time to think about near, mid, mid and long-term considerations that we should be forwarding to the LEPC. Anybody have any thoughts?
Sorry, what, what agenda item are we on?
You know what? I don't have the agenda in front of me, but.
Yeah, it's the consideration of the L E P C's request for long, planning, short, mid and long term.
And it's, I mean, we have the, we just had the FinCom discussion. The next thing on the agenda is the town administrator's report, but we're just, we're putting this in between those. Is that correct?
Sorry, I, yeah, it really sort of grows out of our, our, this FinCom discussion too. And I, I would think some of our, our. Issues will be, you know, growing out of that.
Well, I, I think short-term clearly the town meeting and elections have to be addressed. And still not clear how we're going to do that. We do have dates, but not a process. And so I think that's got to be, that's got to be. High in our priorities in the next couple of weeks.
Were all of you on Wayne's list on his last couple of emails about he would like to next, come to us next weekend. Set up a town meeting, planning. Council, so to speak. Planning advisory group.
I don't believe I was on.
Chief Fisher, who I see there, I can't remember. B O A, Board of, COA and our, our board.
Came in late today, Nathan.
Yeah, came in late today. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I got it either, actually.
You didn't? Okay, so basically what he was saying. You know, they're not, the, the, this planning advisory would not be. Planning, it would not be saying when, but how to, to do it. And we've given them the when so far. I, I would think that the only thing that would change our when would be if they came to us and said, there's just no way, we just don't know how to do it by then. Because we, in fact, now that the unfortunate FinCom is gone, but that was part of the discussion last night also was that. We would really like to get a budget set before June 30th. They really are not happy. Excuse me, would not be happy about this 1/12 business because they have. Big bills that come in on 1st of July. Swallowed one, I'm sorry. And so it would throw things off if they had to do this 1/12 budget deal. So. It really would be advantageous on a number of, for a number of things to get our town meeting done and our budget set. So that's why we're, you know, so we have the when, and if we can do the how, that would be great. The when, obviously, if we can't do the how, we'll have to change the when.
That's one big item. And this maybe falls more in the, Tim, on Tim's list, but just the sort of reopening of town hall and, you know, when that is feasible and then how that would happen. And then also, along with that is the. Just the various boards and committees. Getting back to a more regular schedule of meetings and work. And again, how. How that would be done.
Yeah, that may. Revolve a lot around the availability of testing. And if, even if testing is available, how will we do it in a town like this where we don't really have a health facility? That's something that we'll have to address because I think that's going to be very important.
Yeah. And the other sort of short-term I had was, and again. Maybe this, well, I'll just throw it out there is just short-term, if we're thinking about the next couple of months. Whether as a town, we should be doing something to help families or individuals who have lost income. In terms of the various state, federal and state programs that are available. Which, you know, we haven't really, as far as I know, as it's town, we've never really done that. And but I'm just wondering if we need to look at. Either resources that exist in the region and how we can support individuals or direct individuals that way, or if there's something we need to be doing.
I saw on Laurie Trahan's website, she has set up a. Program to, for, for people to call in who have concerns about, at least about the federal. Programs that are available to people. And she's, and she's got, apparently got either folks who she can refer to or within her own office who can, who can provide advice to people and how you do that.
You know, and with the, it looks like another round of. Stimulus money is going to be passed fairly soon and the, you know, the loan program is going to get another infusion of cash. And I know a lot of folks missed out on the first round because banks ran out of money. So. Anyway, looking at that, I, I think we should, we should try to. Anticipate. Some of those needs and then, and if it's identifying resources and making sure people know how to access those resources that we should be doing that.
By the way, I just checked those emails from Wayne and you're right, neither Nathan nor Luke were copied on that. I'll forward those to you when, once our meeting's over.
We, we've actually gotten it. Yeah, a couple of people have sent it. So thank you to the folks.
Oh, you've already gotten them. Okay.
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 it's all good. Thank you.
I need resources.
And I don't know if this is short-term or more medium, but again, I, not ever having been in this situation before, these may be things that are in somebody other, somebody else's. Baileywick to think about, but I'm thinking about the summer and. You know, how, what we're going to be. Where we're going to be in terms of any kind of social gatherings and also youth programming. And I think it's something that. You know, needs some guidance from not just the L E P C, but. You know, from the board of selectmen in terms of how, say, the. Recreation department is going to approach that and the Gleason Library and, you know, those other. Institutions that would be involved or the sports programs.
I see Luke shaking his head. Okay. Yeah, I don't know if that's.
That email, would you mind forwarding it to me? Yeah, I was just, I can forward it to you. Nathan in a minute. No, I was just going to say, it'll be interesting to see how the whole camp thing plays out this summer, right? Because if, with schools just canceling, right, there's really. You know, I, I figured schools would be the ones to figure out an initial plan and is how to, you know, get kids back into a normal routine. So I think it's interesting, you know, because you have RecCom, for example, you know, while they're a professional camp, they're not, you know, they're not like a FEN or, you know, some of the other ones that are full-time professional camps. So. I think we do have to strongly consider, you know, if, if we want RecCom to do that or, or see if they want to do that. You know, and I think ultimately we need to let people know as soon as possible. You know, obviously, you know. Not tomorrow, but, but I think, you know, we got to get the sense of RecCom. If that's even something that they want to entertain this year. Just because, yeah, there's, you know, there may be an element of risk. I mean, you know, nobody knows when this is really going to end. And, you know, and, and, you know, hopefully by July, you know, one would hope, but, but yeah, you know, I, I think that's definitely a short-term concern. Yeah. And then even, you know, how are we going to ramp the schools back up in September? You know, I, I mean, I think there, you know, it, just because we don't know, right? And are they, are they going to need additional funds? Are. You know, is there going to be, you know, state guidance? Is it guidance that, you know, we're going to, you know, modify? I, I don't know. I, I just think there are a lot of huge question marks that, you know, we, you know, these weekly meetings I think are good. Because information literally changes daily. So, so, yeah, I just, you know, those are, those are, and granted, it's because I have two kids in the system. I'm wondering how the hell I'm going to get back to work when I have two kids. Both my wife and I work. So it's like, I, I don't know. You know, I mean, everybody will figure something out, but, but, but yeah, you know, those are kind of the, the short-term. Things that I'm thinking about. And then also, yeah, it's, as I think Barney mentioned, you know, town hall, you know, kind of implementing a plan to get town hall functioning again. Cause I think the biggest thing here is, you know, and I wanted to mention the FinCom with the board of health position too is. You know, like the, the succession plan, that's progress. We don't want to, we don't want to impede progress because, right? So we, you know, the, even if we move forward slowly, at least we're moving forward. So, you know, I, I, I just think, you know, we have to be thoughtful and creative in some of the ways we do things. But, but, you know, I mean, people are going to want permits to do things, you know, it's. It's going to be the ideal time to start putting septics in, right? And I'm just using board of health as an example because they have a, you know, I think by October, right, you can't put in a septic. Right? So we don't want to have everybody trying to put septics in, in, you know, August and September. You know, so I think we do have to try to get things back into place. You know, you have people that can't get, you know, refinanced because they've got a, you know, an outstanding thing with Conscom or they can't get, you know, they can't sell their house. So I think, you know, there are a lot of things that where people are being impacted where we don't necessarily think of it. So getting the town at least somewhat functional again, I think is important. And then, yeah, I think, you know, as, what was his name, Basa?
Basu.
Basu, yeah, as he pointed out, you know, I, I mean, I think we've got to be creative in, in, in that respect too with taxpayers who, you know, I mean, you lose 25 or 30% in your stocks, right? And then to pay a 14% premium on top of that in interest, Jesus. You know, that, that's, that's huge. You know, I, I think it'd be interesting to, you know, and maybe folks can do this to Angela, you know, just see what the, you know, what the interest in some sort of, of tax relief program is. And I don't know what we could do, but, you know, if it's only a few citizens and then, you know, there's probably something we can do. If there's 50 citizens, then it might be a little more tricky. But, you know, there are people who are really being impacted by it right now. You know, and I, I think we should focus on, you know, see if there's some way to help, you know, I mean, everybody's a Carlilean, so. And try to make something work, I guess. But anyway, and long-term, Jesus, I don't know.
Well, you know, one of the longer-term things is, is we head into the fall. We're going to have regular flu come back and how we handle that in concert with. Coronavirus is going to be tricky and I, and we, that, and it's nothing that we as Board of Board of Selectmen are equipped to deal with, but certainly we have to look at where that planning needs to go and how we might respond to that because that's, that's likely to make things very messy.
Nathan, your thoughts?
I guess I would even a little bit more shorter. And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's almost kind of a, well, what, what. What do we do if this goes even longer than we thought or than we had hoped? And so I guess for me, it gets back to making sure that our essential employees, that we have a plan for that, you know, as, as I was saying earlier. You know, I think, I think that's the nearest term thing that we should do. And then I think taking a look at, you know, you're trying to address some of the things that Luke was just bringing up, taking a look at the town employees, are, are there things we can do to set them up better? So that more of them can do their, their job remotely and not feel like they have to come into the office or maybe we could leverage them, maybe we could leverage them differently, but not put them at risk, but try to get some of. The services that we are providing that maybe we're not providing now, how can we do that? And also figure out a plan for what if there's a second bump, right? And I'm not trying to be a pessimist, but what if, what if we open up, right? And there's a second bump and we have to close down again. What are we going to do then? And, you know, now is our opportunity since we're learning. I, I think now's our opportunity to try to figure those things out, you know, so how can we leverage our employees better than we are now? How can we ensure that if more employees are getting sick, that we can still provide the essential services that we need to? And, and, and what do we do if this goes on for a very long time or it stops and then comes on again? For me, those are the, the most critical things that we should be looking at. And the impact of the budget as we were just talking about.
Well, some of that would, honestly, I think one of the things that we need to do is we have to digitize a lot of the records in town, especially for the septics or in the board of health because. One of the reasons they said they couldn't. Do the permitting is because they'd have to send somebody in to, to open the drawer and, you know, rifle through the paper. So. I, I think that's someplace we really would like to invest, you know, if there are other functions that are impacted in the same way in other offices as well.
Yeah, I think that's kind of like a medium-term thing, right?
I, well, but I think we need to start on it now because to get to the median term, median term, we have to do it now because in the median, you know, when we get to the median term, then, you know, it's too late, then we're going to have the, you know, we'll be too late for the next bump.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking if town halls close, if people can't go there to look at the paper now, how do we get somebody to digitize it?
People, well, because the person that's digitizing it, that would be the sole person there that would be digitizing it. Or maybe it all gets boxed up and sent to a company that does this. I don't know exactly.
Is town hall completely shut down, Tim? Is nobody going in there at all?
It, it's closed to the public, but there are employees that are working. Limited schedules, kind of alternating with other employees and. You know, so that they're maintained distance. It, it, it's closed as far as someone walking into town hall, but. Any resident should be able to get in touch with the department via email or via phone. And get a response, you know, in a timely fashion.
And so what are we doing to protect the employees who are still going into the office?
Well, we, we had a meeting this morning and maybe the chief could. Speak to this, but we talked about putting some, putting protective equipment in town hall for those workers who are, who are going to be coming in and, and working for any extended period of time.
Yeah, so, yeah, he's up a table at the door. I'm sorry, he set up a table at the door with protective equipment. We also have had it, the town hall sanitized several times. But in general, people are careful not to come in pretty much. If you, any day you go there, there will be somebody in there working, but there will be one or two people in there working and they'll be in different sections.
And I, I hit members who had specific needs and put stuff on their desks. But Chief Soros and I created that table with, I think, everything that needs to be taken care of. But I think, I think in general, that's a great question, but in general, the folks that work in town hall have done a really nice job with social distancing themselves when they're working and. And when I think about what Kim, the work that Kim has done and the finance people with who's coming in, why and who's doing what, so that there's not people there and how they touch paper. They've got a really pretty solid plan, I think. I, I don't want to take any steam away from that, but. So to answer your question, Nathan, I think that, you know, we've done as much as we can for now, but you, you, your point's well taken, not to jump in the middle of something you guys can report on tomorrow.
Okay, I, I didn't realize that there were still people going in there.
I guess, yeah, I didn't really. But I, and I know that, you know. Still, one of the reasons that some of them are not going in is because. They don't want to touch the paper and then have somebody else go in the same cabinet. So digitizing some of the stuff would, would be certainly helpful.
Yeah, and I also think online permitting, you know, applications. I mean, I, I know, I, I think building department does it, but I think that's the only one.
They do. And honestly, I would love to put, you know. John in, in charge of that since he knows, seems to know what he's doing and how to do it. And. So it's totally doable. You could do all, you know, and we should, we should drag ourselves up into the 21st century here and, you know, maybe this is the, the impetus. And, and I think ultimately it'll, it'll be an investment upfront, but I think ultimately it'll save us money down the line. And, and if we ever have this kind of problem, we're, you know, we're set up, we're ready to work from home.
Exactly. Yeah, because this stuff's already digitized, right? I mean, it might be tough to read a, you know, a plan that should be yay big when it's yay big. But, but, you know, it's a sacrifice you make, right? Or you blow it up on your computer. But, but, you know, it's a sacrifice you make, right? Or you blow it up on your computer, right?
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah.
With this as a concept, I just, I, I'm having a hard time figuring out how we do it while we're not able to go into the office. I mean, you know, how, how, how do, how do we manage something like that successfully?
As, as far as I understood, John took all of his stuff, he boxed it up, he sent it to a company who digitized the whole thing. They kept the boxes and they keep them safe, in a safe and in a safe environment. And he, he gets a little, you know, a little, I don't know what he gets, whether he gets a memory stick or a CD or what, or maybe it's in the cloud. I mean, I think it's in the cloud. And that's it. It's done. Not only that, but it really floors up, frees up a lot of floor space in Town Hall. Wouldn't be such a bad idea either.
And what is the cost of this?
I forget what he said, but it was, he felt it was very reasonable. And, and when he told me, I thought, wow, that's all, you know, really? It, it wasn't in the hundreds of thousands, I can tell you.
No, there is, there is, I'm sorry. No, there is a CPA application for the stuff in the vault. I can go back and look and see what that was. Just to give an idea, it was, you know, historical town documents and that sort of thing. Because the, because the vault was a train wreck, right? Now it's significantly better. But even too, just it's, you know, the upfront piece too, though, is so, you know, you obviously want to digitize all the stuff that's already there, but, but even just setting up the online permitting system for permits moving forward.
Yes.
Yeah, that, I, I think that's something that can be set up remotely. You know, but again, you'd have to hire a company to do it. Or John, I think John did a lot of his own, but, but maybe, yeah.
No, he hired, because I asked.
Oh, even to do that? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, and, and the thing is too, you know, if we are going to kind of meld all the funds, right? You know, what did, what did Kim say? He had a hundred and some odd thousand in there? Maybe we use that bucket. We say, hey, John, you know, I'm sure he'd be willing to.
It's, it's perfect. It's building it and it, and it's not like it's out of context, so to speak. It's building permits in general. So that money being spent for septic and even planning board, if they could, you know, doesn't seem to me to be a misappropriation of funds.
No, exactly. I mean, one permit comes in and it can zup go to all the boards. Everybody can look at it. It applies to me. It doesn't.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway. Yeah. The, the other thing too is, you know, I, I received a, a comment is about, you know, if there is going to be some sort of stimulus package, either a federal or state stimulus package, you know, just kind of preparing and having an idea of what we might want to apply for or, you know, what sort of projects we could do if there is going to be some sort of stimulus package. You know, I don't know if there will be, you know, odds are that, that, you know, there might be some sort of process, you know, and Carlisle always seems to be behind on the grant process. And, and, you know, it's like even the, the, the woman that came in the other day and we were like one of two towns and all of Eastern Mass.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we try to get a bit ahead of the curve, you know, we keep our ear down to the ground on this and, and just listen, but, but also just have an idea of, you know, what we, we, what projects we're, we're thinking about doing and, and what we might be able to benefit from if a stimulus thing does come out and, you know, what, what, you know, what could we hop on?
You know, I have a connection with the woman that works in Laurie Trahan's office. And she sent me, you know, some other things that I'd asked for. I'll give her a call and ask her to plead, to keep us informed and, and, you know, maybe pre-informed even about stimulus. Okay. Yeah. Well, you know what I mean. Yeah.
No, I know. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So inform, okay. I will call her.
Great. It's always good to know people.
Maybe we should be doing the same thing with Tammy Govey, Alan. You know, in terms of
The state. Okay. I will call her. Yeah. Also, okay, I'll call both of them. Good. Any other ideas? I li, I like that idea, by the way. That's a great one, Luke, but looking for stimulus money. And you have to be on it because I, I'm on a board for a theater company and one of the, their sponsors is a bank and they, they worked with the bank before the PPP thing opened and they were ready to roll the first day and they got their money. They weren't too late. And it's because they had, they had worked with, you know, the bank, the bank knew what they were doing, that, you know, they, and they were on time and they, you know, they got it all together beforehand. And so, yeah, you have to be ahead of the curve, not behind the curve. Town, anything else? Otherwise we can move to TA?
Well, just, I, we don't have to discuss it at length, but just the master plan and that whole process and, you know, what we, you know, how, I think maybe some guidance from the Board of Selectmen and FinCom about, you know, the next year or two, what, how, how that should affect or could affect the sort of proposals that come forward.
Yeah.
And that's a good, bigger conversation, but I, that is on my list. Because the, the Steering Committee is continuing to work and, you know, we do have a contract with Civic Moxie and we've already discussed the timetable extending, but still, you know, we're well into a process of identifying priorities and best practices and then beginning to look at, you know, specific goals for Carlisle. So.
All right. Tim, could you make a note to put them on, put that on a, I don't think we want to do it at our next meeting, maybe the meeting, you know, in three weeks?
May 12th. Yeah, we actually do have a few things for next, next Tuesday already. So that, that mean, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Would be kind of
Next Tuesday is kind of our
Yeah, Tuesday, we're going to hear from the Audit Committee.
This is our COVID meeting.
Yeah, right. We've been trying to, to keep the official board business for the official meeting dates and these in-between meetings are more, well, for the COVID discussions, also more open-ended financial discussions with FinCom and, and others. So have a more formal meeting next Tuesday.
What else do we have on that agenda, Tim, in addition to the?
Report from the Audit Committee on FY19 Audit. The Public Safety Communications Working Group will be coming to make a recommendation regarding the proposed Bana Davis RFP. And the moderator, as Kate mentioned, is also coming in to request to set up that Town Meeting Advisory Committee. So those are three things. Also, we, we'll, we actually have the documentation to set up an OPEB trust that will be asking the board to approve. So at, at one last, the trust will officially be approved. And that will result in a different discount rate going forward. And then is also, I think, a request from DCR. They want to acquire a conservation restriction on, I think it's the Erickson property, if I'm not mistaken. Kate, you'll remember getting this.
Yes. It's, it's kind of like, it's a little piece inside of the state park.
12 acres.
Yeah.
Right, right. And the state needs the board to take certain actions so that they can kind of speed that transaction along. There's, there's a statutory period that the board can waive. I don't know if it's, I think it's 90 or 120 days. And if the board has no objection to the state moving forward, you can waive that period. But we'll have that for you on the agenda as well.
Keith Fisher, if they haven't opened up that other parking lot, maybe we have to mention that as.
From there, they give us the parking lot.
It's already open.
It's open.
Both of them are? Good.
All, all of them are. They opened all of them for us.
Okay, good.
All right. Are we discussing complete streets tonight or is that also coming up at another, on another agenda?
I think, I think on the following agenda, you'll be talking more about what's still on the warrant and what well, you took a vote last time on certain articles to take off the warrant, but over the next few meetings, regular meetings, you'll be, you know, formalizing the warrant for the June 23rd meeting, which will probably be shorter than was anticipated. It's interesting that we, you know, we looked at it from, you know, what, what non-financial articles can we move to the fall? And the Finance Committee tonight was talking about deferring financial articles to the fall. So it's getting, getting shorter and shorter, I think.
Yeah.
As we look at, I know that they, they actually, I thought they might bring it up tonight. They did discuss complete streets to some extent last night.
But I, I would very much like to postpone talking about it because it's not on the agenda.
Right. No, it, it's
No, I was asking when, when we're going to, sorry if it made it sound like it was tonight, but, so is it on an agenda in the future?
It will be on an agenda when we discuss the warrants.
Okay. And, but that's not next Tuesday.
Not, no, not the 28th. It'll probably be on the May 12th warrant, agenda.
Okay. Town Administrator's report?
Yeah, but that, that was a long way around saying that I don't have a report.
Okay. And I, did I have liaison? I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me because
You do have liaison report.
I'm on this little, on a little book, you know, MacBook and so I don't have the, the screen, split screen that I usually have. So, okay.
I have a quick thing on the liaison report. So the Deer Control Committee had a Zoom meeting. What is it? Tuesday, last Wednesday, I guess. And are proceeding with, you know, developing plans for a fall deer hunt. And I know, you know, they came to the board several weeks ago and got some feedback from the board and have been making some, you know, adjustments to their, their plans. And I think at some point in the not-too-distant future, they would like to come before the board to sort of review where they are and before they hold a public hearing, which obviously we'd have to do via Zoom, but on, on the proposals for a fall hunt, assuming we're going to go ahead with that. So just, I guess, Tim and Kate, you, you should let me know or let Jonathan DeCock know when would be a good time to be on the Board of Selectmen agenda.
Okay. So they're all ready to rock, rock and roll?
Well, they would be. I mean, they, they wouldn't be for this next Tuesday, but any time after that, they would be able to.
There, there was a resident that wanted to be notified when it was next on the agenda. I forget the gentleman's name, but I'll, I'll make sure he's invited, you know, to the meeting that that's scheduled for.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You are right on time too.